Good evening. Welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I have called this Planning Commission meeting to order. And before we get started this evening, I would like to introduce to everybody a new member, Kurt Johnson. If you'd be good enough to raise your hand. And Kurt is joining us this month. Kurt is affiliated with Home Federal. I'd like to thank you many times. We have used your parking lot.[29.11][29.11](Laughter). So, thank you so much. Anyway, welcome Kurt.
Thank you.
This is also the time of the month we have started going back and selecting a project that has been done, that we've worked with, approved, where we feel that the petitioner and the person that did the project did above and beyond that he was, he or they were required to do. And I'd like to introduce Commissioner Lutke, Larry Lutke, and he's going to identify one of the projects that we'd like to share with everybody this evening.
Thank you. Every month, the Planning Commission is recognizing a past project for going beyond what was required of them during the planning process. This month, we are recognizing the Avera Cancer Center, also known as the Prairie Center. The Avera Cancer Center was completed in 2010 and is a five-story building with 260,000 square feet that provides care for medical oncology, hematology, and transplant, radiation, as well as a breast center, imaging center, and a state-of-the-art surgery center. Infusion suites provide patients options to undergo treatment in a private or with the camaraderie of others. The events, or Avera Cancer Center, truly advocates the health of their staff, patients, and patient families. Leaders of the Avera Cancer Institute, the Prairie Center is a sustainable facility free of cancer-causing toxins. To this end, the Prairie Center has set new benchmarks in indoor air quality measures, which include air exposure to UV light to kill humidity and air quality. Building materials include VOC-free paints, adhesives, and fabrics. The center features originally quarried stone, design elements that invoke prairie grass, and a sweeping curved glass facade that elicits the expansive South Dakota horizon. Indoor gardens with native plantings, waterfalls, and indoor and outdoor water features capture the distinct South Dakota character. Elements on this exterior of the meditation room resemble the needles of the Black Hills. The facility utilizes a regional BMP that is designed as a pond and a waterfall, which has been modeled for a section of the Falls at Falls Park, which gave Sioux Falls its name. The site also houses a 22-foot meditative area for patients that are surrounded by actual boulders that were received as a gift from Crazy Horse Monument located in the Black Hills. Let's give a big hand to the Avera Cancer Center.[214.73][214.73](Applause).
Larry, thank you. Moving on to our first order of business will be approval of our consent agenda. Denise, if you'd be good enough to read the items on the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of the December 4, 2013 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two, December 2013 Platts. Item three, 2013 1104 rezoned from AG Agricultural District to RS2 Residential District for allowed uses located south of West 85th Street and east of South High Cross Trail. Item four, 2013 1201 rezoned from the RS1 Residential District to the RC Recreation Conservation District for allowed uses located west of South Western Avenue and north of West Black Rock Circle. Item five, 2013 1211 rezoned from the RS2 Residential District to the RD Residential District for allowed uses located north of East 69th Street and west of South Bonson Avenue. Item six, 2013 1215 rezoned from the Lake Park Plan Development to the C2 General Commercial District for allowed uses located east of South Marion Road and south of West 26th Street. Item seven, 2013 1216 rezoned from AG Agricultural District to the RS2 Residential District for allowed uses located west of North Ellis Road and north of West 12th Street. Item eight, 2013 1217 rezoned from RS1 Residential District to the RS2 Residential District for allowed uses located north of West Bitterroot Street and east of South Meredith Avenue. Item nine, 2013 1203 conditional use permit in C2 General Commercial District to allow an off-premises sign over 288 square feet and more than one sign face per direction located at 2609 South Carolyn Avenue. Item 10, 2013 1204 conditional use permit in I1 Light Industrial to allow an automobile storage yard located at 2817 and 2825 West 6th Street. Item 11, 2013 1205 conditional use permit in RA2 Residential District for a group home within 1,000 feet of an existing group home and accessory off-site parking located at 327 and 333 South Spring Avenue and 516 West 12th Street. Item 12, 2013 1210 conditional use permit in C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales, display, and rental located at 3501 East 10th Street. Item 13, 2013 1213 special use permit in Subarea A Sanford Sports Complex Plan Development District to allow on-sale alcohol located at 2210 West Pentagon Place. Item 14, 2013 1214 conditional use permit in RD Residential District to allow accessory off-site parking located west of South Dakota Avenue and south of West 28th Street. Item 15, 2013 1218 conditional use permit in C2 General Commercial to allow motor vehicle sales, display, and rental located at 2023 South Minnesota Avenue. Item 16, 2013 1122 final development plan in Subarea A Interstate Crossings Business Park Plan Development District to construct a data center located at 5500 South Broadband Lane. Item 17, 2013 1109 preliminary subdivision plan for Willow Ridge 2 addition for residential development located at East 10th Street and Six Mile Road.
Thank you Denise. Is there anyone here in the audience this evening that would like anything that was read on the consent agenda moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If seeing none, I see Steve Bambuskirk's here. I can't wait to have him come up and show us what he's doing in the Lake Lorraine sometime, but not this evening Steve. Looks like an exciting project. Chair would entertain a motion on approving the consent agenda?
So moved.
Would there be a second?
Second.
All in favor will signify by saying yes.
I want to make a motion. Amend the consent agenda to move 14 and 15 to the regular agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, moving items 14 and 15 to the regular agenda, and we have a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Consent agenda is approved, moving items 14 and 15 to the regular agenda, and we will take them in that order.
Can we technically just approve the amendment? Do we need to approve that?
Pardon?
Yes, you need to approve the amended version first.
Oh, well, I need a motion to approve the amended version.
You have one?
I have one. And a second? All in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Approved. We will start, if you were here for the consent agenda items, you're more than welcome to stay. You certainly don't have to. The consent items have been approved. We will now, I will look for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Regular agenda is approved, and we will be starting this this evening with item number 14. Mr. Chair, I excuse myself from item 14, please. Very good Steve.
Item 14 is the 2013 1214 conditional use permit in RD Residential District to allow accessory off-site parking located west of South Dakota Avenue and south of West 28th Street.
Jason Beeper, Planning Department, City of Sioux Falls. This is an application by Jeff Kreider for the Sioux Falls School District for a conditional use permit in the RD Residential Districts for an off-site parking lot. The school district is proposing to demolish the 10 existing single-family homes west of the proposed Susan B. Anthony Elementary School for the purpose of constructing roughly an 87 parking space off-site parking lot. It is located at the southwest corner of West 28th Street and, and South Dakota Avenue. And the submitted site plan indicates access, one access onto West 28th Street and one onto South Dakota Avenue. The site plan also indicates the required 25-foot and 20-foot front yard setbacks, the 15-foot side yard and two-foot for the rear, in the rear yard for parking. The plan also indicates the required four-foot high cedar fence on the south and southeast corner of the parking lot. Further hedges indicated on the north side of the parking lot. However, the plan does not indicate how high it was, or how high it's going to be, but it needs to be a minimum of four feet. Finally, four-foot high fence, wall, shrubs, or berm are required on the west portion of this parking lot. The applicant did attend, go to the Board of Adjustment in December to waive this requirement because of the existing access easement for this property and the ones that face Minnesota. Several outdoor lighting fixtures are indicated on the proposed plan. These fixtures will have to meet the outdoor lighting ordinance and may not have more than three-foot candlelight at the property line. The proposed parking lot will provide the required amount of parking spaces for the new elementary school. The proposed landscaping and parking lot screening should alleviate the minor potential impacts on neighboring residential properties. And because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit.
And this is a conditional use permit, conditional use permits are used as permitted within the zoning district with conditions. All conditional uses must meet building and zoning codes, and conditional use approvals or denials, our resolutions, and our final, unless appealed to the city council.
And I would entertain any questions you guys may have of me.
Commissioners, would we have any questions for Jason? Seeing none, thank you. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Good evening. Paul Corn, Sayore Associates, 216 South Duluth Avenue. We were the engineer on this project for the school district. Jeff Kreider, Director of Operational Services for the school district, is also here and could answer any questions that you may have. We feel that this parking lot is going to have a positive impact in this neighborhood by providing 87 stalls of off-street parking, where there currently is no off-street parking at this school site. So, the parking lot meets the setback requirements, the landscaping requirements, the screening requirements. In addition, with some of the input we received at the Board of Adjustment meeting, we have made some adjustments to the parking lot by moving that, by moving the approach that currently goes east out onto Dakota Avenue. We moved that further north to line up with the school drive on the east side of Dakota Avenue. So, I guess with that, we would just ask for your support and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you Paul. Would there be any questions for Paul? Yes, sir.
That west side hatched areas have an access easement, and is that currently being used as an alley for back access to the homes?
Correct. It's, it's, it's basically a presumed alley at this point. One of the things we discovered as we got into the project is that there is no right of way for the alley, and there's no access easement currently in place for that. So, that was one of the hurdles that we had to overcome. So, we worked with those neighbors and are in the process of drafting that access easement at this point, so.
And Paul, the, let's say, further west, these are businesses that face Minnesota Avenue then?
Correct, yes.
On the west portion that we're not saying?
Yeah, as you go further west there at the end of the hatched area of the easement, that's actually the back of a store there. So, that's why the easement stops at that location.
Sure, okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you Paul. Any other questions for Paul? If not, thank you sir. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number 14? Seeing none?
I just want to clarify. There's nobody in the audience that has anything they want to say about this parking Okay.
Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion regarding item number 14.
Mr. Chair, move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would there be any discussion regarding item number 14?
Well, I was a neighbor in this neighborhood for quite some time, and I think this parking lot's going to be a huge benefit because currently, as, as Paul stated, there really is no off-street parking for the existing school that's there. So, I think it should certainly alleviate the parking conditions during the day, which I think could be some, our safety issues. So, I think if we can get staff parking there, it's great for staff, and it certainly will enhance the safety of the new Susan B. Anthony School.
Okay, thank you. Jesse, any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor of item number 14 will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Item number 14 passes. We will now move to item number 15, Denise.
Item 15 is a 2013 1218 conditional use permit in C2 General Commercial to allow motor vehicle sales, display, and rental located at 2023 South Minnesota Avenue.
Goodne, good evening. I'm Diane with the planning staff. The applicant here is Certified Auto Glass Jeremy Muntz. Their request is for a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District for allowed uses, in this case, to allow motor vehicle display and sales in conjunction with his retail auto glass business. The location is at 2023 South Minnesota, so it's Minnesota and 29th Street. Recommendation from staff here is because the applicant for automobile sales for display is compatible with the surrounding areas, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the following. We originally had a stipulation, and we were able to work it out with engineering, that the petitioner does not have to close off both drives or accesses from Minnesota Avenue. The agreement is they will close off one on Minnesota and one at 29th, and the owner has mentioned that that works for him in this case. So, he is here if you have any questions of him as well.
Would there be any questions for staff, for Diane?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Diane, so the, you still want a stipulation that says he closes one on Minnesota and closes one on 29th, or we need no stipulations at all?
Does there have to be a stipulation still? No, does not have to be a stipulation.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions for Diane? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Hi, I'm Jeremy with Certified Auto Glass.
Jeremy, welcome. Anything you want to add to staff's report?
I do not at this time, no.
So, you're going to, well, you've got four accesses now. You're going to shut two of them off and end up with having two?
Yeah, I think most of my property right now is all driveway, so I've, the one on the southern side, or the southern side of Minnesota Avenue, I've never liked that driveway anyways, so I have no problem closing that one down. People just cut through there anyway, so it's not a big deal to me.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, thank you sir. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address item number 15? Seeing none? Chair would entertain a motion regarding item number 15.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Seeing none? All in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Item number 15 passes. We will now address item number...
18.
Well, that'll take us up to 18, Denise.
Yes, sir. It's the 2013 1206 rezoned from RS2 Residential District to the RD Residential District for allowed uses located at 1122 North Duluth Avenue.
There's actually two cases here, items 18 and 19, if I can present the report on those together.
If you'd like to present those together, we'll vote on them separately, but...
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. The applicant for this is Affordable Housing Solutions, Executive Director Shereen Ranchow for that. The rezone is for the RS2 Residential District to the RD Residential District for allowed uses. The addresses are 1111 North Duluth and 1122 North Duluth, just down the street from each other. The applicant is proposing to rezone two parcels at .16 acres and subdivide into two lots and construct twin homes on each lot. Setbacks, the submitted concept plan appears to indicate they require 25-foot front, five-yard, or, excuse me, five-foot side and 25-foot rear yard building setbacks. The concept plan that we show there for parking indicates a single-stall garage for each unit of the proposed four, and, which meets our zoning ordinances, and there is also a shared driveway for parking as well that will be utilized. The recommendation from staff is approval on this because the subject application is consistent with the shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, and the proposed medium-density residential uses still provide an effective inland-use transition. In a rezone case, in a rezone case like this, rezoning shall be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Rezoning approvals or denials are ordinances and will be sent forward to city council for a first reading and a public hearing.
Thank you. Would there be any questions regarding, I'm going to ask for any questions regarding both of these items 18 and 19 of staff? Seeing none? Thank you. Yes, sir. Oh, wait a minute. All right. Your turn will come. I'm going to ask for the petitioner right now to come up, and I believe it's the same petitioner for both items 18 and 19.
Right, right.
So, we'll address them both.
Yep. My name is Shereen Ranch. I'm the Executive Director of Affordable Housing Solutions. And, yeah, we have the same plan for both properties, so we'll address them both. The plan is, like was Diane said, is to have twin homes on each property. These would be, these would be owner-occupied. They would be sold to people that are qualified for, they have to be able to get a mortgage from a bank, just like anybody else. We do have income requirements because we do have some federal funds involved in that, so they have to be what's called, no, their income can't be any higher than what's called 80% of the area median income, which, for example, right now for family four, that's just under $56,000 a year. So, whoever moves into these twin homes, they would each own their, their home. They have to, there will be deed restrictions on the properties so that they have to be owner-occupied. They cannot turn them into rental property. It would, the deed restrictions be for a minimum of 10 years. So, even if they live there for a few years and then sold the property, whoever bought it would have to live in it. It'd have to be owner-occupied. So, it's not the intent, and it's set up so that it's not going to be rental property. Then we've been doing, this is part of neighborhood revitalizations that we've been doing for about 15 years. We've normally have done single-family homes when we've demolished a dilapidated house, but we're finding that even though we try to keep the prices below $120,000, which is a very good price for a brand-new home, we're having, we're still having, there's a lot of people out there that are hard-working people who are able to get a mortgage, but they can't even afford $115,000. And they, if they could get a house for under $100,000, they actually would have lower payments than they have right now for rent. So, it's just another opportunity to get, another way of getting people into homeownership and also helping to help the older established neighborhoods because the more homeowners you have in a neighborhood, the better overall your neighborhood's going to be. So, any questions, I guess?
Would there be any questions for Shereen? Shereen, I, just one. The properties you're buying, are they vacant properties, or was there a property on them that you, that you've taken down?
The one at 1122 was a dilapidated house that we acquired. It's been a couple of years now. We demolished it, so it's been a vacant lot. The house at 1111 was actually a foreclosed home that was in dilapidated condition, and it was actually donated by Wells Fargo, who foreclosed on it, to the city, and the city then in turn transferred it to us.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Shereen? If not, you may sit down. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address the commission regarding items, regarding item number 18 and 19?
Hi there. Excuse me. Hi there. My name's John DeYoung. I live at 1119 North Duluth. I have some concerns as far as parking. This is an older neighborhood. There's not hardly any off-street parking. If you use up 26 feet of driveway, you're going to take up a large portion of the parking that's available in that area. Across the street from 1122, there is a duplex currently in place, so we have a lot of off-street parking already being used up by that duplex. My major concerns are the off-street parking and the fact that it's, it's a twin home that you're trying to shove into a lot that's really designed for a single-family home. It's just not enough space. You only have a five-foot side yard on that place. I know it's within the zoning limits, but you're kind of pushing the limit. Thank you for your time tonight.
John, thank you. Would anyone have a question for John? John, thank you. Anyone else here that would like to address items 18 and 19? Yes, sir?
You'll have to forgive me. I've got a little cold. My name is John Gonzalez. I work, I live at 1120 North Duluth, one of the properties located exactly next to one of the properties. And I agree with my neighbor, we do not have near enough parking as is. I would love to see a couple of new homes there, single-family homes, but these lots are just not designed to hold twin homes. I've spent, I've been in construction. My entire family comes from construction. I've been on job sites since I was this big with my grandfather, so I kind of know, you know, it's not big enough for a twin home. What are you going to do when they have children? I mean, they've got a garage in each unit. They've got a pad in front, but what happens when the children start getting into cars? Nobody ever has just one child anymore. It's two, three, you know, okay? So, they're getting teenage years. Where are they going to park? Their friends are going to come over. I even have problems inviting people over to my own house because it's such a hassle for them to park. I go to other people's houses because it's easier. It's... It's just gonna condense up the neighborhood. You know, please, just put one home there. It's profitable, it'll be better in the long run. The families that are gonna be living in the neighborhood will be happier, and if we keep condensing stuff, especially in these older neighborhoods, I mean, we're gonna have more families there in that one unit. You know, we're gonna have to update the sewer, everything like that, more water's gonna get used. I just think it's a bad, bad, bad idea. Thank you.
John, thank you for stepping up and sharing your thoughts with us. Would anyone have a question for John? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Was there any, anyone else that would like to...
Good evening.
Hello.
Sarah Caven, 1117 North Duluth. Along with all of my neighbors, I am also concerned with the parking. As of right now, I live next to the duplex, which has the rentals upstairs and downstairs, multiple, people living downstairs. Very rarely are we able to have people come over, like my one neighbor stated, because all of the parking is taken in front of our, our locations. You know, I, I have a single car garage, and the person that lives with me unfortunately has to park on the street because I only have the driveway to go up there. The city will not allow me to put a parking pad into my front yard so that I could release one of those spots. So I do, I do agree that the parking is just gonna be a nightmare if you add in a multi-home on both sites. I applaud the fact that you guys wanna put in a new home, but I don't think you should be doing a multi-home. I think it should be a single-family home, and then it should be somebody who can purchase and not rent. And, and that's about it.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your thoughts with us. Would there be any questions for this young lady?
I just wanna clarify, Sarah.
Yes.
In what she said, this is a home for sale. This is not a rental property.
Yep, and I understand that, and I just, I just wanna make sure that it's understood that even if you were to do a single-family home, we still would rather see that it goes to a person who can purchase that home.
Sure.
Versus a renter, because we do have some rentals, and we are running into issues for that. You know, we do love our neighborhood, yes, it's old, you know, and, and we are very proud of our, our homes and our yards, and we have these rental areas that are not so proud of it. So that's all I meant by that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, sir?
My name's Steve Vanenburg. I own the property at 1113 North Duluth. Mistakes and regrets. I came into that neighborhood into a blighted property, and I rebuilt that property, and I'm, I'm proud of it. I also, at that time, we had a lot of problems with 1115, which is the duplex. I bought that property pretty much out of spite because of all of the problems and hassles that came with the blighted property. If I remember right, over 70 police calls in six or seven years. The health department, two, three times a year, those are the kinds of issues we had, and it was homeowner occupied. Now, I realize that not all homeowners are that way, and we got the luck of the draw there. I bought that property, and I know that a couple of my neighbors did disapprove of me building a duplex. I regret doing it now because it, it has created problems. I'm not talking about being a rental, I'm talking about the parking issues. I created off-street parking for at least three vehicles on that property, and more like four or five, actually, if you wanted it. I didn't build parking pads for them, I should say. But there is room in the back. I gave up the parking spot during the meetings, the planning meetings, in front of my house because I also had off-street parking to accommodate me. It has been nothing but trouble. To take away one more parking slot in that neighborhood is disastrous. We all try to be courteous to each other and give each other our, their parking spots in front of their houses. We can't tell people where to park, and they're not going to listen. We've worked really hard in this neighborhood to keep the drug abuse out, the drug dealers, and if you look back at the records of North Duluth, you'll find all of these things. We've had dogs running through there and escaping and chasing people in the yards. In the street, we've worked real hard, and I believe that putting another twin home or duplex, whatever you wanna call it, is a bad idea. It's gonna take away one more parking spot for each lot, and I would, I'm not happy that the thought even comes up, and I would definitely remove my plans if I could go back and redo them on the duplex. I've since, it wasn't much of a problem because I maintained control of that property, and I didn't allow the tenants to, to get away with those things. I sold that property, and things have changed. I don't, I wanna ask a question about ownership of these houses. Is that forever, or was that for 10 years? I, I didn't catch how that was.
That'll be for 10...
Maybe she could answer that?
Commissioner Lukey, you've... 10 years. It'll be for 10 years.
10 years.
Well, we, I have, to be honest with you, we haven't had it firmed up exactly how we're gonna do it. It'll be at least 10 years. We have two models that we're looking at. One, which is one that we now use for single-family homes, and that's where they, there is a deed restriction where they are required to be owner-occupied for 10 years. The other model we're looking at is what's called a community land trust, which we don't have in Sioux Falls, but we have a lot of them in Rapid City. And what that is, is basically the owner, Affordable Housing Solutions, would still own the land, and the people would be buying the house, basically. And that land, we would own the land at all the time. That way, we have more control over making sure it remains as owner-occupied. So we're looking at that model. It's, would be the first time that's been done in Sioux Falls, but just to be open and honest with you, we don't have that part firmed up, but that's why I said it would be a minimum of 10 years. But it could be longer, and we'd be open to doing that, too.
Thank you. I'd also like to bring up another point about the alley access. It does not exist on the odd side of the block. Apparently, years ago, before I got there, there was an alley. It wasn't used, and it was kinda taken over, and buildings and that sort of thing took its space or closed it off. The other side of the street has a partial alley. It does not go all the way through. Neither one of those two lots has an alley access, which might be a different story, but the fact is, it's just not applicable at this point. So I would really just wanna discourage from twin homes.
Steve, thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
We, we hold these to five minutes, and, thank you. Yes, sir?
How do you do? My name is Mark LaFleur. I live at 1116 North Duluth. My neighbors Aster and Lucy Oigard at 1118 North Duluth have asked me to read this letter to the Planning Commission this evening regarding rezoning of 1111 and 1122 North Duluth. We are concerned about the rezoning of these two properties from residential to multifamily residential. The lots are small, and were never designed for that purpose. Rezoning to multifamily residential will add to the problems we already have with parking. Most families have more than one car. Each family should be able to park at least one vehicle in front of their own homes. One of the things we have found most frustrating since 1115 was rezoned to duplex is how many times cars have been parked in front of our home and left overnight. When our children come home from work, they can't even park in front of their own house. We are not against neighborhood revitalization or affordable housing, but we would like to see single-family owner-occupied homes built on each lot. We are unable to attend the meeting this evening due to a prior commitment on Wednesday nights. However, we are concerned about our neighborhood, and we are against the rezoning of 1111 North Duluth and 1122 North Duluth. Do you have any questions for my neighbors Aster, Lucy, Oigard?
Any questions for Mark or...
Well, those three minutes were for Aster and Lucy, the next five are mine.
All right. That's kinda tricky.
I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for allowing us to come here tonight. I'd especially like to thank my concerned neighborhood, my neighbors behind me. It is a good neighborhood. We all know each other, and we all look out for each other. And generally speaking up there, we don't call 911, we call me, and I decide when we call 911. And historically, most of the police calls to that block are 1115 North Duluth Avenue. And granted, it's not an owner-occupied multifamily, but it is a duplex, not a twin home in a residential neighborhood that was never really intended to have multifamily homes on it. We like our neighborhood, we like our neighbors, and we do live in an old part of town, but we've got a lot of class, and we've got a lot of passion, and we really don't want any more saturation. I look at that floor plan, and I spent my career as a design professional. I've appeared in front of this board before. I've served on the City Board of Appeals to the Building Code, as well as the Board of Prefabricated Structures. You look at that, that floor plan superimposed over the site, and it's saturated. There is no access from the alley on either one of those lots. There's a five-foot little skinny corridor between the property line and the edge of the, edge of the townhome. That isn't much room to get anything into your backyard or out of your backyard. Bad idea. Bad idea. Maybe a better idea on a wider lot, but to take a 44-foot lot, which is the narrowest lots in Sioux Falls, and to split them into half, into two 22s, takes a bad idea and makes it worse. Respectfully ask that you consider denying the, the request to rezone those properties. It's inappropriate and wrong. And on top of that, when they were doing the fire training exercise at 1111 before they demolished the building, I had a pretty good visit with the gentleman from the City Community Development, and he assured me that 1111 and 1122 would be getting owner-occupied single-family dwellings built on them by HUD or by Habitat for Humanity. And I've been waiting for four or five years, and I've yet to see anything but weeds. Thank you again. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mark?
Mark, do you know anybody that would build a house, single-family house in that neighborhood?
I know a gentleman that has bought several vacant lots in that neighborhood and moved houses from the Sanford Medical Center area and put them on foundations in that neighborhood and successfully done it. Do I know anybody that would buy those lots and build them? No, I'm not in that business anymore. However, there's lots that are buildable, and they should be built on. Either, either HUD, Community Development, Habitat for Humanity, or a private developer. I mean, there's room to make money on a single-family dwelling in that neighborhood. I just don't think anyone's pursuing it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Anyone else here this evening that'd like to address items eighteen and nineteen?
Chair, I have a question for Diane.
Yes. Staff, Diane, would you come back up for a second?
Diane, as I look at this plan, I guess the one shown up here on the screen, and I see a 26-foot driveway, is there anything that precludes a single-family home from having a 26-foot driveway if it had, say, a two-car garage?
No, technically, it could be still a two-car garage and a parking pad of the same size if it was a single-family home.
Okay. So really, the amount of reduction of parking in front of this particular piece of property is really potentially not impacted whether it's duplex or single-family, as far as the driveway taking up a portion of that curb?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, it does meet the parking requirements on site here, whether it's a single-family or a twin home.
Okay. Thank you.
And Diane, if I may, could you also maybe clarify the setbacks as well, if it were a single-family home?
The setbacks, we have a 25-foot front. On the setback there, it's indicated a 21 to the garage, the five-foot at the side, and a 25 at the rear. The lot is 44 feet wide. They will have to, the petitioner will have to go for a variance for a decrease in that width from 25-foot to 22 for each of those twin homes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Nick.
Diane, in the, as the zoning currently is in RS2, are twin homes an allowed use by condition? Conditionally used permit?
With a condition, they are.
Okay, so regardless of changing the zoning, whoever bought these lots could put a twin home in, in them with a condition use permit to not change the zoning at all?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And will they have to go for a variance to go down to the 21-foot front yard dimension from the 25?
In this particular case? Yeah, they would have to, because it is required to be a 25-foot.
Jason Piver here with the Planning Department. The reason why they're showing a 21-foot setback on the front, there is a provision in the code for these older neighborhoods to allow an averaging of the existing houses, and that 21-foot that they're showing there is, is what they found with the average of the adjacent properties.
Interesting.
Thank you, Jason. Any other questions for Diane? Thank you, dear. I would like to ask the petitioner, Shereen, to come up one more time, if she'd be so kind. Shereen, have you had an opportunity to visit with any of these neighbors before this evening?
No, I, we did, I know the letter went out from the planning office. I also sent a letter out to all the same neighbors to explain more about what we were planning on doing, and asked, but no one ever called me, so now this is the first time I've heard. I did, I should take that back. I did talk to, Lee lives over on Summit Avenue. She lives directly behind the house at 1111 North Duluth, and she expressed her same concerns about parking, but that was on Summit Avenue. So a lot of the same things that the neighbors on, on Duluth are saying, that there's just not enough off-street parking, it sounds like, in the blocks, and, and the streets are narrow, and, yeah, and...
Your organization's been doing a lot of work over in the Whittier area, if I'm not mistaken.
We've done Whittier, Pettibrew Heights, we've done some up, we have a few, just a few blocks, a block or two from this particular sites, too, that we've done, single-family homes. Most of the ti, a lot of times, we do not put any garage at all to try to keep the house more affordable. We do put a parking pad, 'cause that's required. We have done a few where we've put a garage, but then there's single-family garages. We don't ever do two, two-car garages.
And I, I know you'd like to have these neighbors welcome you with open arms.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure, when we talk about parking, it's, it's, it's a tough deal.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, and I don't, I don't have an answer for the parking, other than that, you know, that's why we're putting a garage and along a driveway so you can put another car on there, but I know what they're saying. I live in the Augustana area, and we have the same issues, where when school is in session, you can't have any guests to your house because there's no place for them to park. So I, I, I can relate.
That was an old planning commission.
I can relate. So, all I can say is, I could, I can go back to my board and see if, you know, and relate to them, the concerns by the neighbors, and see, I mean, we, we do wanna, we don't wanna leave it sit vacant lots. I mean, sure, you don't have any problems with cars that way, but it also doesn't look nice either. So I might be willing to go back and talk to our board and see if they'd wanna reconsider, you know?
I'm not sure how the vote might or might not go, but I think it'd be nice to share that with the board.
Yeah.
Just say, boy, we've got a neighborhood here that, I understand your motivation. I, I, I see what you're doing.
Right, yeah.
As far as more affordable housing.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for...
Yes, ma'am. Jesse?
And again, we're here to talk about, does it make sense to, to do this rezone? But I do appreciate these neighbors' passion. Obviously, they have a lot of longevity, and they have an enforcer in their neighborhood, so we wanna keep him happy as much as we can, but... can. But, so what do, what is this how, what are these twin homes? What do you think they're going to go on the market at?
I don't have a exact price, but they'd be under 100, under 100,000.
Okay. And in the square footage of an individual unit, I couldn't find that.
I think they're around 1,100, I want to say. They're two stories, so you...
Okay.
Basically, the first floor would have your living room, kitchen area, second floor would be your bedrooms, bathroom, and then there'd be like a partial basement, where you can do, there'd be enough for like a family room. And then on the, the one at 1122, no, 1111, because that's, there's a little slope at the back of that lot, and that would be like a walkout from the, the family room. And then the one on 1122, because the land's a lot flatter, that would be more of a, a deck kind of setup. Thank you.
What you can guarantee tonight is a 10-year deed restriction.
Oh, yeah, that would be the very minimum, definitely. Because we do that on all of our owner occupied places.
What, once again, you're looking at a program that they're doing in some other cities where you might be able to control that freely.
Yeah, and that's called a community land trust, yeah. And it's, like I said, it's been done a lot in Rapid City, but we have not done it in Sioux Falls yet.
I got a question for you, too. How many bedrooms and bathrooms are going to be in here?
There are three bedrooms and one bath.
In each unit?
Pardon?
In each unit?
Right, right. That's the, the plan we have at this point, yeah.
Thank you for coming back up.
Mm-hmm.
Chair would entertain a motion. We're going to do these one at a time. I would entertain a motion on item number 18.
Mr. Chair, can I have Jeff come up for a second? He looked like he had something he wanted to say.
Certainly.
Just two points, I guess, to help the neighbors and planning commission make their decision or to move forward. This rezoning item would go forward to city council on February 4th. Whether you approve it tonight or defer it tonight, prove or deny, it would go forward to city council on February 4th. Any discussions back to the board could be discussed and brought forward again at that meeting if there was future discussions with her board. So there would be time for that. As was brought up earlier about, if this wasn't rezoned, then we would have a future hearing at a future date. This is total speculation and whenever, for a conditional use to put a house on here, a duplex, a twin home, at this body, and it would not go to city council. And the neighbors have seen a couple of conditional use items tonight. Conditional uses, this is what I really wanted to explain to the neighbors. Conditional uses are uses that are allowed with conditions. So if we don't, if planning commission doesn't rezone this tonight, or if it gets denied, an applicant, whoever it may be, Bob's builder, could come in here and build a twin home on here with conditions. The neighbors could get up here and go, we're still have concerns about parking. The only thing you could do is put conditions on it and say, well, we want a tree in the front yard. We want conditions for, I don't know what conditions you would put on this, but there's very few conditions that are really allowed, because they still have a right to put a twin home on here. It's a tough, tough issue. And again, I'm trying to look at it, too, as I think is what you're doing and going, if you put a single-family house on here with a two-stall garage, you still have a parking problem. If you put a single-family house on here with a one-stall garage, you still have a parking problem.
Thank you, Jeff. Did Jeff clear that up for you, Nick? Yeah, come on up.
So, here's what I would like you to envision, if you would, please. We're perfectly, we would love to have a single-family home. Now, take for a moment and imagine that it's a double-family home, three-bedroom. Okay? So, my neighbor next to me, love the man, John, two teenage daughters. So as it was brought up before, you have two adults in the family, so you have two vehicles. Plus, now you have two teenage daughters, who then also have two vehicles. So not only are you doing four, but when you put on a multifamily home, you've got eight cars. So now, we're not just talking, you know, yeah, parking's going to be an issue, no matter what you do. We are perfectly willing to say, yes, let's put a single-family home on there. At least then we're saving a little bit of parking. But if you put a multifamily home on there with a possibility of eight on each side of the street, we're not going to have anywhere to park. I mean, that is just how it is. So I just wanted you guys to envision that, that if you take four people in one home and four people in the second home, and then you have another eight over on the other side of the street, where's everybody going to park?
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
You know, one more, and then I'm going to close it to public testimony. Come on up, Mark. We'll let you...
Mark LaFleur, again, for the record, I'd have to agree with my neighbor Sarah. You take a 21-foot pad in front of a garage, it's barely enough to park a full-size car and walk between the front bumper and the garage door. If it was a single-family dwelling with a double garage in front, it would be one family there, and they would probably park one vehicle, or maybe inclined to park one vehicle in front of one half or one of their single garage doors. In a twin home situation like that, I can assure you that the only time anybody is going to park in front of a garage door, if they're up early enough to move it, is when the snowplows are coming. They won't park in front of them garage doors. First of all, 21 feet isn't enough. And second of all, how you get the car out of the garage when there's another one parked in the driveway? Bad idea. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, thank you. We've had a lot of public testimony on this. Chair would entertain a motion, so that we can get to a discussion process on this.
I'll make a motion to approve item...
We're going to do this one at a time. 18.
18, for discussion.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead, gentlemen. I'll let you start.
I can see...
Carrie, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking parking probably is going to be a problem. But, I mean, I was looking also at what Jeff just said, that they can come back and get a conditional use and do the same thing.
They'd have the problem anyway, couldn't you?
Yep.
With an RS2 zoning.
Yep, it falls into that with a conditional use.
And although they'd have to come back for conditional use, I mean, we're limited as to conditions we can do. And we can't make a condition, no, you can't do it. But I think that's just because it's fallen under the RS2-type zoning.
Right.
And I hope...
The reality is, a twin home can go here, regardless of what we decide tonight. We can approve this, we can deny it, we can defer it. But a twin home can go there, with or without our permission. I feel for these neighbors. They, I'm so thrilled that you all came out and showed your passion, because I believe that, that is the way we do maintain these neighborhoods, especially the ones that are so well-established. And we live so differently today than when these houses were built. They maybe had one car. They probably had 10 kids, but they only had one car. And, and it's just different now, but the lots have not been able to grow to satisfy the needs of how we live today. But it doesn't change what we can or can't do with that land. And I would, regardless of what we do, I would strongly encourage the petitioner to see what, what they could do to make a single-family dwelling affordable here, and bring the possibility of presenting that to the council on February 4th. I, I don't think there is a good solution. I don't, other than to turn this into a parking lot. And that's not a good solution either, probably. Things are just different today. And, and I wish we could, you know, throw it up all in the air and make it come down and work for everybody. But I'd, I'd really like them to pursue the possibility, instead of having four units within this block, to have two units within this block. I know it's hard to make it affordable, under 100,000 or under 120,000. Melanie is sitting in the front row. She's worked on affordable housing for I don't know how many years. We need it. We need to get families into homes and out of apartments, because homes are so much more affordable for them. And this is a great agency that works hard to do that. I just hope we can find something that works for everybody. But I, there's still going to be parking issues at the end of the day, whether this is a, a single-family or a twin home.
And I agree. The, the driveway width, as I asked the question, is very much driven by the need of the house or the dwelling. But this is ultimately a neighborhood issue. It's, it's not an issue in just this neighborhood. It's in all kinds of neighborhoods. And, you know, as I said before, if it's a, say it's a four-bedroom house with a two-car garage, same parking issue. The difference is that if you were to build this as six bedrooms, obviously, you're likely to have a little higher parking load on it. So if anything, it probably makes it a little more of a challenge, puts even more pressure on it. It's a challenge.
Steve and Andy, what do you guys think on this one?
I, I would have to agree with both Sean and Jesse. You know, a twin home can be built on this either way. In my opinion, they're doing the best that they can to supply at least the garages and the driveway there. And I, I just, it is a tough situation, and I, I do feel for them, but I, I feel that I would have to support it.
I guess, way, I'm kind of looking at it, and more and more as I stare at it, is, I got a 161-foot lot.
Okay.
Why am, why am I so close to the road? Why don't I set it back 25 feet and have a 25-foot driveway, so I've got a little bit more parking there? I mean, it's just, I'm, I'm looking at it and things, as we, as I'm listening to the neighbors and I'm talking, I'm go, as we're talking, and maybe it's, it's too late to, to do some of that, but aren't we just rezoning it, so the owner can build, can move that setback back to 25 feet and have a 25-foot driveway, which would allow the two cars to park on it a little easier? Because like I said, you've got a 161-foot lot, you're using 56 feet of it. I know you're going to take a little bit of the, of the yard, but that would, might be an alleviation for the parking to, again, as one gentleman said, I agree, a 21-foot driveway, try to park right up next to it. You're going to have a car in the door and a car hanging over the back of the sidewalk, especially if you've got, if they've got a pickup. So, it's a thought. I think it's a great idea. It's just, the rezone, I think, is, is good. The affordable housing is what we need. It's just some thoughts that were coming up to me. And then like I say, okay, we're just rezoning this. This isn't the final development plan for this. Am I correct? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think what Steve said at the end was what helps me out, is that we're looking at, does RD belong near RS2? That, just, it's a straight zoning issue. Do these things, are they, do they belong together? And I don't see an issue with RD being near RS2.
Sean, could that be pushed forward just because of slopage on the lot? Would they have pushed that forward just because of that?
Uh, could be any number of reasons. There's potential that you could do something similar to what Steve was saying, if it slid back and get a more of a parking pad in front of the garage. Hard to say. Depends on the condition.
Well, you know, Larry, I don't know if you've been up there, but if you drive along Duluth Avenue or any of those, those houses all line straight up one with the other. So I don't know if maybe that was a thought, just to keep some consistency in that. That's just how they built them then. Your, everybody's front porch came out to a certain, you know, width and, or depth. And, so again, I, I think we've given the petitioner a lot to think about tonight, but as a zoning issue and as a land use issue, for me, it's pretty cut and dried.
Kurt, this is your first meeting tonight. What do you think?
When I look at this, I agree with Steve. What would be the possibility of moving the, the dwelling back? Because you cannot access the bulk of this property's land from the sides. But am I understanding correctly, that with the zoning change, it could allow that to happen? Am I understanding that correctly?
Say that question again.
If the zoning change is approved, could the dwelling be moved back on this parcel to the more usable parts of the property?
I'm looking at staff. I'm pretty sure that it could be.
Whereas it is right now, it cannot be done that way.
Actually, I think it can, it could be slid back under any condition.
Yep. Setbacks are 20 feet from the rear.
The setbacks are, are the same in RS2 and RD for a twin home or a single-family. So, and this is strictly a concept plan. This isn't, you know, they could adjust things, move it back like you guys are talking about. They're just showing us a concept plan for the rezoning.
And Kurt, to help you, I think that minimum setback means exactly that. They, there's also a minimum setback for a backyard. So I think that 21 could probably be something closer to 30, if you chose that that's what you wanted to do. And that would be entirely legal.
Yep.
As long as the backyard setback is also maintained.
I, I just think...
Yes, Jesse?
The petitioner now has access to our neighbors. I think, have an opportunity for them to get together. Maybe there's something that they can find workable between now and February 4th, that, that would be somewhat amenable for everybody and be a win-win, as much as we can in this neighborhood. We need to get some nice housing in this neighborhood. There's no doubt about it. And...
Well, it sounds like we've removed a couple pretty rough pieces of property. It sounded like...
Exactly.
I think I heard one was in foreclosure and...
That is a big issue in our, our town right now. It is a huge problem.
Yeah, we need, yeah, I think we need to do whatever we can to facilitate something like that happening in a positive way in the core and with neighborhood input.
Steve, I can tell you wanted to say something.
Mr. Chair, that is why I brought up that, or part of the reason I brought up that scenario, was I was looking at it, was because I was listening to the petitioner, and she said she would take it to her board and discuss this plan as to just exactly how to do it. So, and that's why I brought it up, to give her some ideas, is to help out, to work out what the neighbors in.
Gosh, we've had some good discussion here this night. I, I appreciate it, guys. For whatever it's worth, I, I, nobody likes change. I know that's hard. I've listened to the neighbors. I, I know where they're coming from. I hope, no matter what happens, if, if, and I'm, I'm kind of getting the sense, I think this commission is going to probably support the petitioner. But having said that, I think they're going to be a lot better off with this rezone, having this owner occupied, than having someone from the general public come in here and, and put up a rental duplex. And I, I know Shereen, I, I, I think this deed restriction, I think, is a, a big deal. And I hope everybody understands that by ordinance, anybody could come up here, buy this lot, and put a twin home there, use it as a rental.
So do we need to put a stipulation of the 10 years at all, or can we, no, can I do that?
We've had a good discussion. I'm going to ask for the vote. All in favor, I'm going to do these one at a time. I'm going to do number 18, and then I'll look for a motion on number 19. But number 18, all in favor, will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed. Item 18 passes.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair, if I may read item 19 into the record before you do the vote. Item 19 is a 2013 1207 rezone from RS2 residential district to the RD residential district for allowed uses located at 1111 North Duluth Avenue. Thank you.
Chair would entertain a motion on item number 19.
Chair, I'll move to approve item 19.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We've had a pretty good discussion. I think that included both items. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed. Item 19 passes. Denise, we'll move on to item number 20.
It's a 2013 1212 Future Land Use Plan Amendment to change a neighborhood employment center to a community employment center, located at the southeast corner of West 85th Street and South Tallgrass Avenue.
Jason Bieber with the Sioux Falls Planning Staff. This is an application by Joel Dykstra for a future land use amendment to change the southeast corner of West 85th Street and South Tallgrass Avenue, from a neighborhood employment center designation to a community employment center. The applicant is proposing a future land use amendment to change the designation on the southeast corner, from a neighborhood employment center, which allows roughly seven and a half to 30 acres of commercial, to a community center, which allows around 30 to 60 acres of commercial. And he's proposing to construct commercial and office development within this property. One of the major criteria we looked at when we, this... Uh, one of the major criteria we looked at, uh, when we, this request was submitted, uh, was the fact of the applicant's ongoing traffic study. Uh, this traffic study is indicating the need to shift the access points farther to the east and south, um, of the, that intersection than what was originally intended or thought, uh, when the 2035 Future Land Use Plan was, um, envisioned. Um, and the major reason of that is the projected increase of traffic on West Eighty-Fifth Street with, uh, the announcement or the proposed interchange of Eighty-Fifth and I-29. Uh, this interchange then shift these access points, which will increase the size and extent of the proposed development at this corner. Uh, the proposed future land use amendment from a neighborhood employment center to a community employment center generally meets the intent of the shapes who follows comprehensive plan. Several factors have changed since the future land use ma, was adopted in two thousand nine, uh, designating this intersection as a neighborhood employment center. First, the future traffic demands of West Eighty-Fifth Street after that proposed interchange at, uh, I-29, uh, is completed. Next, the construction of the Tallgrass-Soulberg Overpass over I-29, which was open to the public in October. Uh, this will eventually increase the traffic on South Tallgrass Avenue. And finally, the, uh, ongoing traffic impact study that is being conducted by the applicant, um, that's indicating the need to shift these access points farther out. Uh, this intersection does generally meet the definition of a community employment center. The intersection is a, does have two arterial streets with one, with one of them, uh, a main arterial, which would be West Eighty-Fifth Street, a proposed major arterial, West Eighty-Fifth Street. Um, and finally, this intersection in the future, after the interchange's construction, could be envisioned to serve, uh, the entire community, not just this specific neighborhood. And it is also on the fringe of a regional commercial, uh, regional employment center at that intersection of Eighty-Fifth and Twenty-Nine. Uh, because the subject app, application does meet the future land use amendment criteria and generally meets the definition with a community employment center, staff does recommend approval of this future land use amendment. In a future, uh, land use amendment, this will change the designation of this intersection in the 2035 Future Land Use Plan. Uh, and future land use amendments, uh, approvals or denials are resolutions and will be sent forward to the city council for, uh, public hearing. And I would entertain any questions you may have for me.
Would we have any questions for Jason?
Jason, excuse me, what? Jason, for the audience and everybody, what is the main difference between a neighborhood and a community development center?
Uh, essentially, the uses are the same, it's the extent of it. Uh, neighborhood community center is just what the definition says, it serves that specific neighborhood, so you get seven and a half to thirty acres of commercial for the entire intersection. Um, a community is the next step up, that goes to the, let's make sure I got my numbers right here, um, that would go up to the thirty to sixty acres of commercial for the entire intersection.
And just how far are they planning on moving the access points on his property now?
I believe they're going to the six-sixty or quarter miles, um, which is more in line with a community, uh, employment center than a neighborhood.
Okay.
Jason, a community center would allow a building of what size? What's the maximum size of a building?
A community, or a community employment center, right now does, would, is the same as a neighborhood employment center for land uses. They'd both allow the same size buildings.
And the maximum would be?
There is no maximum in the nineteen eighty-three zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Jason? Is the petitioner here?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Joel Dykstra, um, 404 E-77th Street. I appreciate the time and attention to this issue. This is actually a, um, a very long-term process. This is the second step out of four. Um, we were here a couple of months ago to, basically to annex, annex this property into the city. Um, once that annexation was, was completed, the, uh, if we could go, maybe go back to the larger scale, yeah, that one, no, the, the one to be in between, there. So, the, the subject of this current conversation is the intersection at the, um, at, on the northwest part of this map. Um, the land that's on the east half of this overall parcel, that hundred and fifty acres was annexed, uh, in November, I believe, and then the east half of that has been, is the subject of an application for zoning as residential and, um, uh, and some mixed use in the north part. So, what we're doing is then coming in with another zoning application to get ahead of the, of the development and to, to hopefully to develop, to create as much certainty in, in, in the plan as possible. And the western part of this property would be for office, multifamily, and commercial. The plan is not for anything to happen here in that, on that western portion, in the commercial land, for anything to happen in the next two, three years. I mean, we're, we're looking at, uh, paving of these major arterials, uh, we're, we're looking for the impact from the Soulberg Overpass. Um, we know people are going to be coming down from the north, we know people are coming from the east, uh, and we're hopeful that, uh, further conversation about the big interchange on I-29 and Eighty-Fifth Street, um, will essentially demand that this property be, uh, raised in profile and in, in, in the scale of the development that would be appropriate here. What we want to do is get that established well in, in advance of any additional residences and, and, uh, any more neighbors coming into the area. Um, so, uh, with that, I'd stand available for questions.
Any questions for Joel?
I think it's a great strategy, Joel.
Joel, do you have any idea as to a timeframe for that overpass? Have you heard anything regards to that?
I hear a lot.
Ah?
And, um, we have, there is, actually, there's, the, there has been renewed activity on the part of the landowners in a relatively large area around there, both west side and, and east side of the interstate. Uh, and there have been renewed conversations taking place about that. Uh, I know the city, um, in, in, I know Mark Car, Mark Cotter and other members of staff have been active in talking to DOT and the federal government about, um, those studies that are ongoing and making sure that they're able to look at all the options. So, you know, it, it's years. Um, the, the I-29 plan, uh, has been pushed out a little bit, so there's a little bit more time to get some of that preliminary work done before we start spending the big money. And what we don't want to do is, is see, um, part of that built and then twenty million dollar, um, were, uh, overpass thrown away to put ramps on it at some later date. So, we want to be sure to do things in the right order. We're encouraging and supporting that work on the part of the city and, uh, and we think they're doing that all in, in the right direction. But it's been pretty dormant for a few years and it's gotten pretty exciting, uh, in the last six months.
Okay.
But it's still years away.
Thank you, Joel. Any other questions for Joel? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to, uh, address item number twenty? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a, uh, motion regarding item number twenty?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve item number twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I think it's very prudent to put a plan in place. Uh, I think it's proven time and time again when people have an idea of what's going to happen there and I think we can paint the biggest, broadest picture possible. At the outset, the end game is going to be better.
Agree.
All right, uh, all in favor of item number twenty will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Item twenty passes. Denise, item twenty-one?
Twenty thirteen twelve oh eight Conditional Use Permit in RA2 Residential District to Allow Accessory Off-Site Parking Located at Nineteen Fourteen South Spring Avenue.
Diane Decoyer again with Planning Staff. The applicant for this is Chris Papas. Um, he's looking for a conditional use permit in the RA2 Residential District to construct an off-site accessory parking lot. This is an expansion of the existing parking lot for the Bagel Boy Building or what was the Bagel Boy Building. Um, the request, um, is coming before us again, it came back, I think about a year ago. Um, at that time, he was requesting access onto Spring Avenue. This time, he is not requesting access onto Spring Avenue. Um, accessibility, the proposal includes direct access from Minnesota Avenue, um, through the existing parking lot. The garage apartment building that is currently located in nineteen fourteen and a half South Spring Avenue will be removed in order to develop, to develop the additional parking. Setbacks and dimensions, the parking lots must be two feet from the property line if screened. The applicant is showing a six-foot-high privacy fence on the provided site plan. The proposed parking lot shows twelve additional stalls. The site plan shows the existing driveway for the single-family structure to be used for resident parking. So, there would be, with a fence there, uh, prohibit from that driveway going any further into that parking lot. Um, the applicant must meet outdoor lighting requirements of the zoning ordinance when adjacent to residential. A photometric plan would be required by the applicant. Well, um, the granting of the conditional use permit will leave the site within the RA2 Residential District. The commercial nature of the proposed parking lot is apparent. Because the applicant, um, may set a precedent by expanding commercial function into the residential neighborhood along South Spring Avenue and comprehensive block and redevelopment should occur in conjunction with a larger development proposal, staff recommends neighborhood input for the conditional use permit. Should the planning commission choose to approve the permit, staff recommends the following conditions. No access to South Spring Avenue. Any lighting utilized shall be downcast with no spillover onto surrounding properties. Required fence shall surround the parking lot expansion and be composed of vinyl material. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I do have one.
Yes.
If you can go back to the map that showed the zoning, it looks like just to the south there's a, uh, a spot where the commercial has encroached into the residential already. Do you know what that is? Is that a parking lot issue, same thing we're talking about here?
It does look as though it's parking. I want to say for some of the businesses on Minnesota that provides parking to the rear of them. I'm not exactly sure what those businesses are there.
Okay. So, this has been done before then in this general area?
Apparently so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Diane? Thank you, dear. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Chris Papas, nineteen thirteen South Minnesota Avenue. I want to thank the commission this evening for your time. I was actually here two years ago, um, visiting this matter and at that time I did request access to Spring and that was, my big intention was to get, gain access to Spring. And I'm here now reassuring everyone that I do not want access to Spring because my neighbors at that time didn't want it and I would probably understand why they would not want access to Spring at this time. Driving up and down in Spring Avenue, you're not going to notice any difference from what's there now, other than being cleaned up considerably, in my opinion. Um, the lighting, I wasn't even planning on putting any lot lighting in. Um, I was planning on putting up a privacy fence and that's why you didn't see any lighting drawn. But if you want me to put in lighting, I will. I'm here to answer any questions. The lot is, lends itself for drainage to Spring Avenue and with drainage to spring down the drive, because I will be doing, redoing that driveway as well because that driveway for that, for that rental or that unit is dirt. And I want to actually put in a nice driveway to allow for the water to flow out to Spring Avenue. For drainage.
Chris?
Questions?
Would there be any questions for Chris?
I recall a lengthy conversation about this little parking lot two years ago, Chris, and, um, clearly that location needs additional parking and I think, uh, the elimination of access to Spring was probably the big issue back then. I know it was for me, uh, personally and I think, uh, putting a privacy fence in there, vinyl that, uh, you can't see through from one to the other, I think will be important. Um, I just want a clarification from staff. Is, is there lighting, a lighting requirement for that parking lot?
Oh, excuse me.
The lighting requirement is not necessary.
Okay.
But if he does, he just needs to meet those requirements so there's no spillover in the neighbor's yard.
And Diane, that would be even if he did it two years from now. It, it'd have to be approved by-
Correct, yeah, he would still have to submit a photometric plan to the city for review and approval.
Thank you. Chris, if, if you've got a specific need, is there a, for that parking spot right now?
At this current time, no. Two years ago, when I did approach the commission, at that time, there was a need. I was trying to keep the Bagel Boy as a tenant. I figured, well, if I was going to do it to keep them as a tenant, why wouldn't I consider doing it today for the potential of a tenant in that space? I did speak with the owner of the property at nineteen twelve South Spring Avenue and Ken in Iowa, um, he is in support of what I'm doing. He had nothing negative to say. He was actually very happy to hear that someone was going to clean up the overgrown mess and get rid of the dilapidated structure on the east side of the property. And he also brought to my attention that he said on the east side of his property is all hard surface paving for all his tenants. He's got about a fourplex or a sixplex there. Um, I did speak with Lurleen to the south and I think she's here this evening and I'll let her speak for herself because I don't, I mean, I can tell you what we talked about, but she'll tell you what we talked about.
Chris, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Chris? Thank you, young fellow.
Thank you. I only want what's best for that neighborhood because I'll be there a long time. I'll grow old owning that.
Yes, is there anyone else here this evening that would like to, uh, speak to item number twenty-one?
Well, in regard to this rezoning, I am Lurleen Runyon.
Okay.
Owner of nineteen twenty-four South Spring Avenue. And nobody wants to have a commercial off-street parking lot within twenty feet of a bedroom. This rezoning can do nothing but decrease the value of the property. Based on prior experience with the prospective owner of this property, if you approve zoning, I request that a significant amount of improvement cost be placed in escrow and contain significant penalties for failure to, to complete it in, in a timely fashion. My prior experience relates to the owner's acquisition of his residential home several years ago to, that's east and south of mine, which is on Twenty-Eighth Street, just south of his property, which he bought. And what he did is, um, take the half of the backyard and fill it in and make it a parking lot. But he owned the house, so he could do that. And that's where he got extra parking. But in the process, he asked me if, um, if this was okay to do. Well, he gave me a bagel and a cup of coffee and proceeded to do what he wanted to do and when I said, "Well, if you're going to do it, put the, the retaining wall all across the back of my yard." And he didn't want to do that, so he went in three feet, so it was legal for him to do what he wanted to. And then he took out, which was a leveled ground at that left because there was a drop-off to the property. We had trees and bushes and everything. Well, then the bushes and trees were taken out and, um, he put the, the, he did a nice draw job of asphalt and made a nice parking lot, but he didn't put a gutter. And when I had a four-inch rain, all the water came, uh, down, well, to the west of the property that he's acquiring now and, and down off- property that he's acquiring now, and down off my, whatever it was, you know, to the west. And then it went south, because I'm on a lower level. So I'm the drainage pit. And it caused 30 feet of block basement to cave in. And my insurance called it a flood, so I didn't get in. No one paid for it. So I got no compensation for this, and it cost me over $10,000 to replace it, and I lost my renter. And very emotional. It's just a little upsetting that I have to endure this again, because he just put in a fence after all these years to block the lights that would go in my backyard, you know, from his parking lot. And now he's going to the west. But he has a house, he's taking away the garage, but if he has a house that has had multiple dwellings in it, where are they going to park if he takes half of his lot It's still, well, it's just not good for my property unless he wants to buy it. He can do anything he wants to if he'd want to pay for what it's assessed at for equalization. That's kind of, I'm kind of joking with this, but you know, it's reality. And I don't know what to say, except that when he did with this heavy equipment, he came in my yard, and he damaged a tree. He didn't take it away, he damaged it, and then the city, it became diseased, and then I had to remove it at my cost. Since, like I said, since it was called a one-house flood, my insurance didn't pay, and I didn't get any compensation from him. He just said, "See my lawyer." But I mean, I was too emotional, and I didn't know how to access a lawyer, because I'm not a rich person. Therefore, I lost $10,000 worth of, just the block in trying to replace it, and loss of rent, and collective construction efforts of both my son and son-in-law. I don't know what I should be saying, but like him waiting for all these years to just put up the fence that, you know, would not have the car lights in my backyard from his property when he had the Bagel Boy. I don't know how he's going to remedy these things, but these are just a few of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down this evening and sharing that with us.
Well, I'm over 80, and I didn't want to.
I was going to say it's cold out tonight.
Sometimes, yeah. I don't want to be just angry, and if I have a chance to speak, I'm going to do it. I mean, at this point, anyway.
Absolutely. Thank you, dear. Oh, was there any questions for Arlene?
So, I'm just trying to, the water that, sorry. The water that came in, that came off of the property to the east behind you?
Yes, all of it from the east, because it was all asphalt, where before we had earth and trees and brush, he took all that away to make it more accommodating for his property. But now he's going to put some more asphalt in, and that'll be just another water slide, probably. It will take some extensive, right now, the earth is higher than the retaining wall that he acquired. And trees are there that are falling. I don't have any on my property, but these old trees, the branches, are falling in my property, and it has broken off lines, you know, like electrical lines even where I've had to replace. That's not his problem, but I mean, these are things that I've had to deal with.
You've owned this property for quite a while, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
You use this as rental property when you live there?
Yes, but I don't get good renters.
You don't?
No. And one's lived there for a year and hasn't paid the rent, for $600 a month, you know, so...
Oh, we're not going to go there.
No. Well, I try to be a nice person, and people take advantage of me, but I mean, I'm done with that. I guess, I don't know if it takes 80 years to figure out something, but I finally...
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else here this evening that wanted to address item 21?
Yes, sir.
I am Kent Alberti. My home address is 2605 Costello Road. I own a piece of commercial property at 1825 South Minnesota, and I just would like to say that my experience with Mr. Pappas as a neighbor with commercial property has been very different. He has maintained the properties that are adjacent to mine, and I feel that what he is proposing, be an improvement over the building that is there, if you can call it a garage, it would be an improvement to that neighborhood, and I think that in the long term, it would be a benefit to the property values and the folks that live on Spring Avenue. So, thank you. Thank you for your service. I know that sitting on these boards isn't always a piece of cake, so any questions of me?
You say you own property a block to the, be to the north.
To the north, yes. 1825 South Minnesota.
Is it a commercial piece of property or residential?
Commercial.
Commercial property.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming down. Any other questions? Speaking of putting in some service, I think you go above and beyond, for you. Ken is on the school board, for anybody that's not aware of that. Any other questions?
I have one more question, staff.
Thank you.
All right. Let me ask, is there anyone else here that wanted to address this particular item? If not, Diane, would you come back up?
Diane, this privacy fence, is that to be on all three sides of this property?
Yes.
The line looks like it is. I just want to confirm that that's...
Yeah, it's pretty tight there on that property line, but yes, it is required to be on all three sides.
Okay. And what are we doing to ensure, should she experience additional runoff that she has not experienced in the past because of this asphalt here? What's her recourse should that happen? Or what's, I don't see a drainage deal here, so...
Yeah, I mean, there cannot be a negative impact on the adjacent properties due to this change, but if that does happen, I'm going to refer to Jason on this.
If this petition is approved, Mr. Pappas will have to come in and do a parking lot permit through the zoning office, and that's also routed around to engineering, and they will, he'll supply the engineering department with contours and make sure the drainage is okay. For some reason, if it would switch and it would be going onto this lady's property, then the drainage engineers would go out and actually look at it and make sure that it's draining correctly. It's not allowed to drain on somebody else's property.
So if Arlene has issues going forward, she needs to call city engineering?
She would call either Andy or Carrie Ellis and the city drainage engineers. Yep.
But even before any issues would happen, he has to go talk, he has to get a permit to do all this, and they're going to look at it beforehand to make sure there aren't issues. And if he has to put a detention pond on it, they say that, then he would have to do that before he could construct anything, right?
Yep. He would do a full review of it.
And do they count affect his other property that he has where the drainage is coming off of that?
They look at where the drainage is going from other properties and running through this, because he can't block drainage from other properties either with fences and things like that, but, yep.
I just wanted to know that she had, that prior to anything even happening, he's, it'll go through engineering, and then in the unforeseen, should it happen, that there is some recourse.
Yep.
But there shouldn't be any issues as it goes through engineering, I would think. Thank you.
I'm sorry, one last question, quick.
One more question, Jason.
Does this new structure, this parking lot, does this remain part of 1914 South Spring, or does it become a piece of property for the South Minnesota property?
No, this will remain part of this property. That's why we're considering it an off-site parking lot. If it was part of the old Bagel Boy thing, then it wouldn't be an off-site parking lot anymore. It'd be part of the actual commercial business, so...
Mr. Pappas, you own this property now?
Chris, why don't you, I don't know, we'll see if somebody wants you to come up to answer a question. Does anybody have anything further for Chris?
Yeah, I'll ask you a question, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you just clarify that if this were to be approved, you would still have parking for the existing residential home?
Yes, ma'am. That driveway there is probably 50 feet long, and they park on that drive right now, although it's dirt.
Okay.
I mean, they will be parking there.
All right. Thank you.
You bet. And I just want to let Lurleen know that I'm sorry that you had those troubles a few years ago, but I do plan on getting rid of the trees that are falling into her yard now. They, there's two trees over here on the southeast corner that have to come down.
Chris, have you given some thought to the design of this driveway, this garage or this parking lot? It would appear to me, and I'm just off of memory, it appeared to me your drainage is going to have to go down that driveway to Spring Avenue.
Correct. That's what we, that's what...
Have to lift both sides of this.
Correct. That's exactly right. Or, just eyeballing it, of course, I haven't had an engineer come out, but I eyeballing it, it naturally slopes to Spring Avenue, and that's where the water will drain unless the engineer says, "No, it has to drain to Minnesota Avenue." That's, I'm willing to take it either way. I mean, it doesn't...
Well, if done correctly, it could offset some of the drainage on some of the...
On the property to the south? Most definitely, actually, because not only that, but there'll be a curb, and it'll be sloped to the center and down to Spring.
And the driveway running out to Spring, you say is currently dirt?
If you look at it, yeah, it's...
Gravel.
Gravel.
But at least it goes in the soil.
Well, you're going to have to do that correctly to get it running down there and keep it from going in your basement at 1914 if that happens.
Without a doubt. And I remember a few years ago, and I think this is going back 10, 15 years, I can't remember exactly, Lurleen, but I think it was at least 15 years ago, and she did, I think I remember actually getting the call from Jeff, and he encouraged me to put in a curb along the west side of my property to stop any water from encroaching onto 1914, which I'm guessing then ended up on 1924 South Spring. And I gladly put in a curb. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't do it.
All right.
I did.
Any other questions for Chris? Anybody else that, no, I've closed this to public testimony, haven't I? We've had a motion and a second?
No, we have not had a motion. You said we were done.
So we're going to close it for public testimony, so Chair would entertain a motion regarding item number 21.
I'll make a motion to approve for discussion purposes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Just Andy, with the three stipulations, right?
Yes, with the three conditions, and actually, that was one of the reasons for the discussion. I also wondered if maybe we shouldn't, on the conditions, I just noticed that it isn't clear that it needs to be a privacy fence, and I just wondered if that is something that should be added in that condition, was my thought.
Well, we can certainly do that.
You could add it now when you made your motion, if you want.
Just to assure that that continues moving forward.
So are you saying that you would like to make a motion to approve item number 21 with the three stipulations, but by adding...
Privacy fence.
Required, or a privacy fence?
Right.
Would there be a second to Andy's motion? Larry, you're looking very thoughtful there.
When you say that it needs to be on all three sides?
Yes.
Okay, surrounding, okay. I'll make a second then.
We've got a motion and a second. Time for some discussion.
Is he going to put the privacy fence all along the property to the east, I mean, to the west?
Privacy fence will encompass, Jason, I'll explain that to you here, how that privacy fence is going to work.
But he's just going to do it to his parking lot? He's not going to...
Just to the parking lot.
Well, for me, I recall the discussion very clearly two years ago, and the concern was dumping that additional traffic onto Spring Avenue, that I think wasn't appropriate at the time. There's access onto Minnesota Avenue and then onto, I don't know what it is, to the south, the street to the south there, which was enough access in my mind. Having made those changes and not allowing access, and I think there will be improved drainage, because though that is gravel, it's not sinking into the gravel, that's for sure, because it's been there a long time. So I think we can improve some drainage issues in that neighborhood as well, so...
Does anybody else have some thoughts in regards to this? Arlene has certainly, you know, certainly shared some of her concerns with this. I don't know if some of those concerns we can deal with. I hope, Chris, you've listened to some of this, and I know you'd like to try and be a good neighbor, and...
Well, as we've done some design professionally for parking lots and drainage, we know that city engineering is pretty good about checking how things drain. They're very particular in how things go, and they check things thoroughly and make sure that the plan is right before it gets implemented. So I have every confidence that the issues that Arlene brought up will be addressed prior to construction.
Do you think this will be an improvement?
I do. And it will help that property that parking along Minnesota can be a real challenge. I've seen it, many, many properties have challenges like that.
Anybody else like to share some thoughts?
This is a tough one, because she's right, there's a parking lot 20 feet from somebody's bedroom. Not that there, you know, couldn't be with a duplex next door, that same thing could happen either way, so I guess it's, it's just tough.
Well, I went by the property, I'm familiar with the property. I think it was one time a garage was converted into a small one-bedroom house. I think what parking that has been there has been in the driveway for years. I think it's always been tough for parking. It's like a duplex or a twin home, where the only parking is the driveway. And then how to, you know, each party get along as far as parking in there, but I kind of look at it as potentially an improvement, but I'm not sure Arlene's going to agree with me, but...
Well, he still has a house, see, that is, has multiple dwellings, which causes parking problems.
And she always has the opportunity to appeal to city council if she wants to discuss it further.
That's a good point. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve item number 21 with the three stipulations, but we're adding that the fence be a privacy fence. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
All in favor will signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Did I do that right, Denise?
Yes, sir.
I think they're going to get rid of me next month. We've got elections next month for new officers. I'm finally starting to get it. All right, let's move on to item number 22.
2013-1209 Minor Amendment in Subarea A, Hazeltine Plan Development District to Allow RD Residential Density Lot Area and Setbacks for Residential Uses Within Block 11, Hazeltine Edition Located at the Northwest Corner of West Benson Road and North Marion Road.
Diane with planning. The applicant tonight is Steve Van Buskirk. Proposed regulations on this is Subarea A, Hazeltine Plan Development District to Allow RD Residential Density and Setbacks. Minimum density regulations will meet the RD Residential District for twin homes. Side yard setbacks for twin homes are required to be zero or five foot on non-party wall side, 25 foot at the front yard, and whichever is smaller of 25 foot or 25% of the lot depth for the rear yard setback. We have a note here from engineering regarding drainage to follow the development engineering plan for grading and drainage... plan for grading and drainage of the site to ensure that the proposed street and lots will flow to the existing BMP facility. Because the subject application for a minor amendment is consistent with residential transitions, staff recommends approval of the request. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Diane? Seeing none? The petitioner is here. I thought the petitioner had went home. Would the petitioner be good enough to come up? You wanted to go.
Yeah.
Steve Van Buskerk, 5800 South Ramington Place. Just if you've got any questions about the Twin Homes, actually, we're just doing a switch in the PD requirements and just kind of memorializing the RD is what we've got going on.
Would anyone have any questions for Steve? None, Steve, thank you. Was there anyone else here that wanted to address item number 22? Seeing no one, Chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve item number 22 as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second. Time for discussion. I see Steve's brother showed up finally, right at the end. Maybe he had something he wanted to add. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Item number 22 passes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Wow, everybody seconded that one awful fast. We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes, yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.